2019 meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen order. I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda for this evening has been distributed. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With no meeting mail, no appointments, no old business. New business, continuation of where we were last week is the town meeting warrant review. And there were a couple that we'd held pending further review of materials regarding the articles. So why don't we go through and we'll talk about what was left open. First of all, union and personnel contracts. Do we have a dollar amount on that yet?
We don't have a firm number yet on the police contract, but I'm recommending we carry this article at $50,000.
Sorry?
$50,000?
Jesse, for, oh, we have police, fire.
I think we're okay. I mean, I reserve the right to come back and amend that, but based upon the preliminary numbers I've seen on the police contract, there is no retro on the fire contract and we should be...
That's because we're up to date with the fire contract.
Correct, well, there's no retro. And so we might have some residual on when we actually come to the end of the year on the contracts that were settled. So I'm just leaving a little bit of a buffer there.
Okay, so the articles pertaining to the retro.
The article would be to fund a personnel or a union contract in fiscal '19.
Okay, so that's a retro one.
Correct.
And we're going to go into executive session later to review the fire contract and the police contract. So, but I think we should probably put this, we should probably move this one forward because we know we're going to have some contracts to, and it's just putting a dollar amount to it. So I don't know why we wouldn't.
I'm fine if that's what we're talking fiscal year 2019 to make back down in here.
Fiscal year 2019.
Correct. Motion to approve.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article four is the 2020 budget. Why don't we come back to that? Just because articles eight and nine relate to the Gulf Enterprise Fund and the Gulf Capital article, and Mr. Isaac's in the audience. So rather than holding him for as long as it takes us to get to the budget, why don't we, why don't we talk about, why don't we talk about those articles? And again, I've been, I've been sitting with the Gulf Committee, so I'm aware of what's proposed. I don't, I don't recall exactly what the specific questions were, but we, there were some people who wanted to spend more time reviewing the information that we'd been provided. Mr. Isaac, I know, do you want to come up? And I know there was some, maybe we can just talk about, I do remember some questions about the capital plan and what the capital plan was and the dollars that were allocated for the, potentially allocated for the capital plan. Are you prepared to talk about that or?
I'm prepared to help clarify any questions the board may have. I think there was a question about what our free cash balance is.
That's correct.
Go into that a little bit. FY '18 results, we had a very good year. We were able to pay, do all of our operating expenses. We paid off our debt payments of $347,000. And I believe we added, although I haven't seen the official numbers, somewhere around $140,000 to our free cash or contingency, which would bring that total up to about $537,000.
And that's for the year ended June 30th?
Ending June 30th, $100,000 of that is designated for FY '19 reserve. Okay, so there's an undesignated balance.
Right.
Sounds correct.
You are correct.
About $426,000, which would be up almost $140,000 from the prior year. Now, one of the difficult things is that we finish, in my estimation, we finish the fiscal year, you get certified, and you find out whether you had a good year or a bad year. And then you want to determine how much more can we put into the golf course, the infrastructure to help build the business. And normally we would, or in years past, we would have a special town meeting in October, which from a timing standpoint is pretty good because you've got, you've been certified, you know what your cash is, you start to plan on what you want to do. But now with the October meeting no longer, we have to kind of move things forward. So we're, we're in April. We really don't know how we're going to finish this year. We know what our balance was last June 30th, but now it's kind of, all right, how are you going to finish the year? And how much do you want to take money away from your reserve? So that's the difficult part as far as I see it. We need, we need to put some money into the golf course. And at our last meeting, we started to list some specific items, additional cart paths, which would allow us to keep the golf course open when it's wet conditions. An area that we had a golf architect review our golf course. One of the things he pointed out is that we have some golf holes that are quite long for golfers who are not experts at the game and that we should try to build some additional tees closer to the green. These kinds of things would help us grow rounds. 10 years ago, we did about 36,000 rounds. That was before the Great Recession. Now, in 2017 golf season, we did less than 32. In 2004, we generated over $1.6 million in revenue. In 2017, we generated just over $1.4. So you can see, things have changed. And we really, for this golf course to be profitable, and my definition of profitable is to look every May and June to see whether every nickel or every round is going to make us come out positive cash flow or in the red. So we're looking at trying to do, put together the capital plan that will lead us towards the opportunity of growing the rounds. And that's what we, in our last meeting, we talked about some specific items that I just mentioned. And again, we don't know how we're going to end this year. Last fall was a very, very wet season, caused us to spend additional money on chemicals, herbicides, and pesticides. And right now, our superintendent is saying we're, he needs another $25,000 worth of chemicals to be in a good inventory position for the upcoming season. Now, we've taken that into consideration. We have $40,000 in our current capital, current fiscal year capital budget. We're going to hold that. We're not going to buy any equipment. We're going to use that to augment the expenses. And we're thinking we're going to be in good shape. But right now, we don't know, like I said, we have $100,000 of our contingency or free cash in reserve. We don't think we're going to use it. So right now, and so that would again bring our undesigned balance back up to that $537,000. So with that, we're saying that we think, no, we think we would like to spend up to $150,000 on capital projects that we think will help us grow the business.
How many more years do you have left to pay off the cost?
The final debt payment is in fiscal 2028.
2028.
Right now, our debt balance is $2.3 million.
Jim. Mr. Isaac, thanks, thanks for coming in. I always appreciate the work that you do for the golf course, you and all your policy committee members. The, we have a golf reserve fund now of $100,000. So y'all looking at that hundred as well as $150 additional dollars. Is that correct? So basically?
Well, we're planning, we're, right now, we're suggesting that we will not use that $100,000.
The budget that you have?
Right, that reserve is to cover operating expenses or revenue shortfall.
Okay.
To balance the net. Right now, our revenue is $25,000 ahead of plan.
Okay, got it.
And our expenses are basically in line except for the overage in pesticides and repair of equipment.
Okay.
But like I said, we're holding $4,000 in this FY '19, $40,000. That is for capital expenditure. And we're saying, if need be, we're going to use that to, into the expense lineup. And so we're anticipating not using that $100,000.
Okay, so the $150 for the article would be to do all the improvements without touching the budget?
Right.
And so the article, if approved, that town meeting, the $150,000 before you could spend it would require a board of selectmen plus golf committee vote, same as the reserve fund that you have here always requires.
Correct.
Board of selectmen plus golf committee. So the hundred, we should just keep aside. That's fine, for seeing the case budget shortfall or things come up, emergencies come up, you have that hundred grand. But the $150 is to do all improvements.
Right.
And if I could guarantee him a fall town meeting?
Yeah, no, I understand. No, I understand. And they do have a lot of improvements that need to be done. So we can, we can bring up our rounds of golf. And we, we talked about in the past that we're going to, you shorting, I'm not a golfer, but we're going to shorten some of the holes to make it more friendly, to a diverse group.
More enjoyable. I mean, it's, it's, that's the thing. Junior golfers, the tees are too far back.
Correct.
So we need to, we need to encourage, move it up, encourage them. So when they play the game, I mean, it's all about scoring.
Right, 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 right.
I'm a golfer, I don't, I want to break a hundred.
Right.
If you put me in the back tees, I'm not going to play golf.
All right, excellent.
I mean, my only comment on top of this would be, I've attended the last few golf committee meetings to try to understand and provide support. And the golf committee is very deliberate and very careful. And everything they're trying to do is to, is to protect the course, is to increase play, is to increase revenue, is to make sure this thing is profitable and that we make it to 2028 when the debt goes away. And we've got some change of flexibility that we, that we don't have now. So, but all of these expenditures, I think, we don't want to spend money. But if the course slips and the golfers don't come, then we've got a, we've got a bigger problem.
I think there's a lot of good ideas that the committees come up with actually to increase rounds of golf. And that's the object of the game, right? Is to keep increasing revenue, not decreasing revenue. So I'll make a motion to support.
Both articles?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Isaac.
Thank you, Mr. Isaac. Just continue on. Let's go to Article 13, the GIS plotter. I think this is the one you said you don't need, and we said, no, you have to take it.
Fine, you can force it on.
Two grand. Okay, two grand. I make a motion to approve this article? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 24, the Net Meter Solar Credits Contract Authorization.
I have that scheduled to, about the 23rd of April meeting.
What is this?
This is to purchase net meter solar credits.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. I'm asking you at this moment just to let it go to the warrant. You can always table it, get to town meeting, and you're not in agreement. I've got Jim coming in on the 23rd to discuss it. The best way to describe this is we buy, we buy, we buy dollar bills for 80 cents. And then we pay our electric bill with the discounted dollars. And I think it's a good deal, but, and this is the important part, it is a decision that has to be supported by the board of selectmen, has to be adopted by town meeting because we're entering into at least a 20-year contract with a five-year option if you so desire. So this is, it should save us in the course of 20 years, a million dollars. But that would be roughly about 50 grand a year. And the biggest user of electricity in the town is the schools. They're 80% of our electrical budget. So 80% of our savings would go to the schools.
It's tax, yeah, exactly. So did we, do we have something drawn up for council to look at?
Council has looked at it. There's still, actually, they sent back, I gave you a copy of what council sent back. The, the company itself is now arguing, they adopted about 99% of the changes.
Okay.
They have a conference with council tomorrow morning to resolve the remaining issues. Council will then feed back to us an approved contract. It's exemption to 30B because it's electrical procurement. So we don't have to go through the process, but it has to be approved by this board.
And we would sign that contract.
That is correct.
So we'd get the chance, we're asking town meeting to approve it. We'd get to, we'd get to review and approve that contract before it was signed. But we need town meeting approval to take that step.
Is this, is this article then, just them, the town meeting vote is just authorizing the board of selectmen to engage in this? Or is we, are we going to have something concrete for town meeting to vote saying, this is, this is it, nuts and bolts, we're in?
You will have something concrete.
Nuts and bolts for them to vote.
The contract will be approved tomorrow between town council and the provider. Then that will come to you on the 23rd. You could say yes, or you could say no. If you say no, it doesn't even go to town meeting. If you say yes, it goes to town meeting. Town meeting passes it because it's a 20-year deal, then you sign it.
And the board also has the option to table at a town meeting if we need to.
You do. Well, you have choices. You have a lot of choices. You can pass over it, you can reject it, you can, you know, you don't even have to bring it to town meeting if you're not in agreement.
Could I go in another direction? Town meeting approves it, but we, you know, it's a complex contract. We read it after town meeting, and we decide we don't want to sign it.
You don't have to.
Okay, so town meeting's not making it sign it. They won't authorize it.
Town meeting is giving you the authorization to enter into a 20-year deal.
Okay.
If you choose not to do that, that's up to the board of selectmen?
That was kind of the question that I asked, and we said, no, we'll have something concrete for town meeting to vote.
We will.
Okay, so it's the same.
But if we, if we don't have, I mean, that's a pretty quick timeline.
If you change your line.
We get a contract like this, and if we, if we...
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So we want, make sure we have plenty of time to, I want, you know, if we're going to sign this, everybody's got to be in on signing it.
Right, and we need to be able to explain what the heck was on the town meeting vote.
Exactly.
Is this a proposal a couple people brought to the board a month, two months ago?
Yes.
Okay.
I have not scheduled them back in. I've got Jim representing the transaction. If you prefer to have the vendor in, we certainly can.
My instinct is this is something we want to do. But I, I, that's my instinct. That's not based on, that's not based on any of the facts I've seen.
We have, they, they have given us the board at that time. Mr. Derox wasn't part of the board, but they gave us a small presentation like a, you know, PowerPoint type thing.
Yes.
If we can just make him a copy so we can...
Okay, okay.
No, it's not, not anything big and elaborate. It's only a few pages that they brought.
I think the only thing that's big and elaborate is what I gave you is their proposed contract, which I sent to council. Council redid it and sent it back. I haven't reprinted that because I don't know how much paper you can handle.
Yeah, no.
And as soon as they've got a finished deal, then I'd be delighted to now present it to you for reading as opposed to making you read every draft.
Right.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 27, this is all the changes to the zoning bylaw, which are...
The zoning, the planning board did meet on this, and they've cut it down substantially. And there's a new draft in your package. The only thing I would tell you at this point is to let it go to town meeting. And it's a lot smaller than it once was.
Is Mr. Merritt going to talk about this when he comes in?
He can, he can talk about this.
I don't know, like upland circle, I printed that. I don't know what an upland circle is.
Oh, instead of the square, Kevin actually knows this one. Instead of the square, it's a round circle now. But they can do the upland. And so that's, you know...
It's just, I just want to understand it.
They're going to do a public hearing on the 23rd of April.
And it was required to do a public hearing.
Vanning was required to do that.
On any zoning change.
And then I would also have to go to the bylaw review committee as well for approval.
So this is very early in the process though, is that?
Yeah, I would still...
But we're still taking it to town meeting before?
Taking it to town meeting.
And is that all going to happen before town meeting?
Yes, it has to.
Okay.
Basically just give it away with the go-to-town meeting without fully understanding what we're letting go to town meeting. So I know it's a little, it's a little crazy.
I mean, I reviewed it. I reviewed all the redlining documents, I saw it.
I think with respect to the board, though, when we get on town meeting floor, if all our stomachs are in our throats and we make a motion to table, you know...
It's going to be a table.
It's going to be a table, right? We all have to have that one fuzzy feeling about it.
Yeah, Mr. Merritt's going to come and talk.
Yeah. Once, because it's been, it was like 20-some-odd pages.
Not anymore.
So now it's been redrafted.
Oh, really?
Right, yeah, it's been redrafted. The planning board had some indifference with it.
It's in your package, it's now only this big.
So what was, what was sent to me two days ago, changed?
That changed. Yes, it's now only six pages now. And it's much, much more refined.
Can I get the new revised?
You got it.
Yeah, but all of it. That's not it. So this isn't it anymore? That's what I...
So take what I've got, what I gave you before. I've got the changes, they're only letting go forward.
So a motion to support Article 27 going to...
So moved.
Second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm looking for something that I thought we held that I'm not... I want to go back to, we're going to go back to the warrant, but I thought we had another one that we held. The pilot, I believe, oh, here, right here.
Yeah, we did have...
Article 17. Article 17 is not in the old copy.
I know, because I don't like getting too many more copies. I've done a lot of work on these copies, so I keep it.
So the, I mean, I reviewed the material that was sent to me. And my gut is, similar to other articles that we've looked at, that if we got this approved, it would give us flexibility in the event that someone came into town and wanted to do an energy-related facility. So it would give us the ability to say, we're going to tax you conventionally with real estate taxes, or we're going to sign a pilot agreement, which would allow us to give you some stability over a period of time to let you know what your tax revenue is going to be. So...
And that period of time, I'm sorry. That period of time can be five years, 10 years, 20 years?
Yeah.
So we can shorten it up if we want to.
Now, I did hear back from council on this. We have to break this into two pieces. One is this gives authorization to the board of selectmen to negotiate a pilot, but every pilot agreement that you do negotiate will need to be approved by town meeting. So this article's changing a little bit. Where I had worded it to the board of selectmen was the final word. The board of selectmen negotiates the contract and then submits it to town meeting for approval.
A special town meeting or?
Any town meeting. If you thought it was important enough, you'd call a special town meeting.
Right, otherwise it goes to the next...
Otherwise it goes to the annual.
There's usually a gap, though. I've done some research on the pilot programs. At first, I wasn't really, it wasn't very appealing. But however, I've talked to Mr. Noble about this as well. And it's, it's, what's, a lot of municipalities have done was go the traditional way of taxing personal property, and they get it all in a lump sum. The problem with that is the Tax Appellate Board has ruled in favor of a lot of solar companies, saying that you cannot do that. And it's whatever they, however wording they use.
Disparate value.
So what they did was they ruled in favor, and some municipalities were collecting hundreds of thousands of dollars for certain solar farms. And the Tax Appellate Board has actually ruled against the way they were assessing for real and personal property. And their tax liability was reduced by hundreds of thousands of dollars. So if you're a community, a municipality, that say we brought in from one, which we don't have in town, but a large-scale one that brought in $300,000 in revenue, and the town's budgeting that money, and three years later, Tax Appellate Board takes up the case, and you lose it, and you go to $100,000, you now have a $200,000 shortfall in your revenue source that you've been budgeting for.
For each year.
For each year. So it's, I believe that a pilot now, after reading everything I've read, I think a pilot is the only way for a municipality to go because it then kind of protects...
Can't teach your revenue.
The amount, because now there's a binding contract, and it has to be renegotiated between each party if there's discrepancy in the original agreement. And you both have to have an agreement. So to take that money, if you were collecting in our town, you know, we collect $20,000 from a small one that we have in our town. In over five years, we've lost 50% of that revenue already. Okay? So instead of that happening, what you would do is, it would just read, the pilot program would just read for the 20 years, if that's what you gained into, you know, $1,000 each year, and you get your $20,000 that way. So it's a, it's a constant revenue stream, and it's kind of guaranteed. So you don't get all the money upfront, but at least you got a pilot and you're somewhat protected from being taken to the Tax Appellate Board and having them ruling against you after you used China budget money, which we don't do because we have the Capital Solar Fund. But neither here nor there, I think that pilots in this particular case will be beneficial. Is that, is that correct to say, Mr. Noble?
Couldn't have said it better. Happy to have you on the side.
I think it's, I think it's nice to do. I mean, we'll make it, we'll make an individual decision when we get there, but at least this gives us something we can do or not do in the future. So I don't think it...
We will have a request on Monday for a pilot.
We will. Okay.
Pure Size Energy has informed me today that they will be putting a request before you to do a pilot.
And we could say no.
You could say yes, you could say no.
Okay.
Up to you. But I'd like to have the authority to negotiate.
Where are they proposing?
Patino's property.
Okay.
On the 580 Monroe Avenue.
By the pavilion.
Yes, sir. So I mean, and, and the pilot would be drafted, but based on the megawatts, it's usually based on the megawatts of what that solar farm can produce. I've read a lot of them, and it's mostly off megawatts. So depending on what that is, the completion date, I mean, you can't negotiate a pilot before you know what you're building. So it gives us ample time, and then they're still in the process. And I think in some of the pilots, it's either completion date or commercial.
You could, you could, you do one of two things. You could do the first commercial sale, but who knows when that's going to be?
Yeah.
Where you could do the completion sale, which is literally the minute they hook it up to a resource, you can tax them.
Right.
Okay? I prefer a date certain. You know, I don't really care what you want to pick, but I want to know the date because I want to know when I can reject revenue.
We have flexibility, and I think, I think it's beneficial to municipalities to, to get away from just trying to get all the cash upfront. Because as I've seen and read online, you go online, you need certain... Yeah, it's changing. And now they already changed the laws anyway. The depreciation, what, five to seven years now versus whatever it was?
Well, they adopted acres what now, 10 years ago or better. So, but they've changed the rules on taxation for solar farms 14 times in 10 years. And the problem is if you don't have, if you have a pilot, you don't change. You've agreed.
Right.
If you don't have a pilot, they're not allowed to go backwards in time because the law changed, but they will change the value going forward.
Right.
So under acres, I think the depreciation could be there seven or nine years. So you start off here, and instead of going for a long time with a steady clip, So you start off here and instead of going for a long time with a steady clip, you go phew, right down. So I'm, I think this is a better deal for us.
Is there a motion to support Article seventeen?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I know, I, I was just going with him.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this, if we, do we need a motion on the golf to approve up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars or is that, is that a done deal?
The fact that you put it on the, on the warrant is your approval?
Okay, I didn't know if you had to put the amount of the dollar in.
All right, but the, it's in the warrant article.
Okay.
So you approve the warrant article?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. But the really important thing is what you had emphasized with me this afternoon. That hundred and fifty cannot be spent. But board vote. Okay. And then, I think you have number eighteen left. Article eighteen?
I do.
Yes.
Do we have to hold that until we...
Hold the budget, yeah, we can hold that.
No, no, Article eighteen is fire EMS renewal.
Oh, I thought we voted that last time. I don't have that.
You hadn't received a contract.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did hold that.
So are we ready to move that?
Um, we haven't ratified the contract. Can we do that when we come out of executive session?
I could change my motion.
Yeah, I would say this though. Why don't you approve it to go to the warrant? That's as far as you have to go.
If the contract's not ratified tonight, then there's no need to approve it to go to the town meeting, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so should we just hold it until we go into executive session?
All right.
Where you have to vote police, fire EMS, and then when you come out, just remember to vote.
Eighteen.
That out.
Eighteen.
Okay. Just remember.
Okay.
All right. Let's go, okay, so...
And what about stabilization? Did we do that already? An op, we did a, we did a, did we do stabilization?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you reduce, did you reduce the stabilization?
No, I didn't.
Did any go from two fifty to two twenty or something like that?
No, that was the end's article on streets.
Okay.
Yeah. Right.
We come back to change that number yet.
I have a law.
Restore it to the two fifty. I really would like this because I may be able to do that now we know cost of contracts.
So why don't we jump into the budget? Mr. Noble, do you want to provide summary first or...
Sure, before you is a summary budget which actually shows a balanced budget. And that, of course, is the summary sheet that you have presented. So I don't know how you like to do this. Do you want to do it by total adoption? Do you want to do it by a whole? How would you like?
By budgets.
One at a time?
Yeah, we, we, if everybody's book is synchronized with the budgets, that'd be pretty good.
Okay. So number one is the reserve fund.
Motion to approve. Can we do it that way?
Yep.
We don't have problems with it?
Right.
Why don't we just, or just, or just hold? Yeah, all right, motion to approve is probably best. Motion to approve second?
Second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee budget, number one.
Who's that?
I've got the, I'm on the one.
That's different, dude. We have, no, it's tab number two.
I've got the reserve fund.
No, I have number one is still in the finance committee.
Okay, these are in different order.
He was working on the package.
I guess. Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, I had to go through them and...
You have reserve fund?
I've got finance committee on page five.
Finance committee, number one.
It's number one, I've got it on page five. Page five.
Oh, okay. We actually need to put these in the...
I've got them in the order they were given.
Okay.
Who did that?
Curiously.
What are we saying?
Uh, finance committee's page five. Um, I don't know what order you're going to have them in.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, tab.
Moderator. Tab two?
Tab two, page three. How's that?
Tab two, page three, perfect.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So is that Perry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, next budget is budget number three or tab three, page four.
That's us.
Selectmen.
Motion to approve.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, no, I'm with Dave.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, while we're on this, can, can we address one thing that's, that's different from what we usually see?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, so we have a different column. It says fiscal year twenty TA slash finance department recommended. Some of the salaries are a little bit different than what's requested from the departmental request. Some of them.
Now, you see, see what they do?
Yeah.
Some of these changed. I spoke with Mr. Noble, just for clarity, so all members understand, I spoke with Mr. Noble. It's because of the change, because of a leap year?
Leap year and a half, it's a half week longer. So it's fifty-two point four eight six weeks next year.
Why don't we just fill in for the departmental request?
Well, because it'll change next year. And you're giving more money.
We should have just made that adjustment.
Well, I didn't feel I had the authority to change the departmental request.
Because then you're officially inflating somebody's wage for the previous year.
So I wanted to show a trail. That Julie and I had corrected a number.
This particular one's the same because we fixed our stipends, but you'll see that there's differences. So, Mr. Chairman, we have a different number. If you look at departmental requests, there's a different number in the FD, TA FD recommended. So you need to be cognizant about what's happening in there.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a difference in number. We need to know what we're voting. We should be, if we, if somebody has a problem with that F twenty TA FD recommendation, which one we're voting?
And it's always going to be salary changes, I would assume, for the most part.
No, we've got other technical corrections.
That's why I'm trying to bring this to everybody's attention now.
Okay, so we're good, we're good with this one?
We're going to make a motion to approve. If we're going to make a motion to approve, we'll follow this one because that makes sense.
Assuming that the board of selectmen concurs.
Yes.
We'll go back to the department and say, we're going to adjust your request to reflect this change just in case there's any confusion, so that when we go forward to town meeting, the department request will be accurate. But for our records in preparing future budgets, we will show...
You'll default back to the request.
Correct.
Because of the leap year thing. We never did this before in the past. That's why I was confused on it.
Agreed. So you're just mentioning like the, where it's seventy-seven, oh, four-seven, next year we'll refer back to the seventy-six, the third line down, the clerical salaries?
That's correct.
Correct. Now, the clerical salaries, who does that include?
Uh, includes...
It's added in...
And, and an extra, if you will, a part-timer.
Okay.
So we've always had a part-time?
Mm-hmm.
In our office, what, the last year or two?
We have not.
And this...
We took an intern out of it for a while.
Yeah, there's some discussion about bringing somebody else back in to cover some of the other stuff like that. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second?
Two hundred and sixty-one, one twenty-three.
Aye.
Aye.
Two sixty-one, one twenty-three.
You okay?
Tab number three, page number nine. Town council.
Okay, oh, we're going to hold it. Can we, can you go to, can, well, let him go to tab number one. He's the only one that's got to jump around us at all, three of us.
Whatever you like. The only problem is I don't want to miss a single one of them.
Okay, so let me, all right, let me, let me leave and I'll have you jump. How about that?
Okay, that's fine.
Because we're all, three of us in the same room. So let's go to, to tab eight, page two.
Tab eight? Ooh, page two.
Okay.
Right.
Oh, so now, so apparently we're not in the same order.
Oh, yes, we are. I see what you're doing. Reserve fund, we did town meeting and elections.
Town meeting and elections.
And it is an election.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tab four, page six.
All right, you've got that adjustment here.
Right.
But you've got one positive adjustment and one negative adjustment.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is, is that okay, the, the negative adjustment? Because it's made up in, in the EMS?
That's correct.
Assistant accountants in EMS reserve.
Okay. By the way, we, I apologize for being out of order, but comment that you guys made at the last time we talked about was split salaries confused the hell out of you. So next year we're changing the format, so we'll actually be able to go right to a person?
Yeah, I want to, yeah.
Okay, so you will see. Now, of course, the department budget will still have to reflect the proper, but when you want to see a number, it will be a page for that.
Yeah.
So we're going to change the way we present the budget next year.
I'll even suggest a deduct, maybe, if somebody hissed their salary and then hissed the piece of it that's shown elsewhere.
These split out of the munis program?
And you said you couldn't do it.
I can't do it that way, but we are going to address your issue.
So you're saying some of these salaries here I'm looking at are split?
Yeah, the assistant accountant, for example, is split between the EMS budget and the finance department budget.
That's all the counts.
Okay.
And then we have one elder one, and then, and then we have water and sewer with the director.
Water and sewer, and then the planning board and the conservation.
Oh, yeah, conservation.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve this budget?
Motion to approve the amount two hundred and sixteen, one ninety-eight.
I'll second.
Town accountants budget.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Tab five, tab seven assessors.
Tab, tab seven, page five, which one?
Tab five, page seven.
Thank you.
Okay.
We don't vote the assessors.
Okay.
The board of selectmen don't have jurisdiction over the board of assessors because they're a separate elected entity.
Okay.
So we've never voted the assessors in the past as a selectman?
No, agreed, agreed.
That's the way to do it.
I'm just, I was so excited to get the numbers correct.
I just wrote, don't vote.
Tab six, page eight. It's not complete anymore. In all of these budgets, we had individual presentations on in the cycle.
I have a question on the clerical. We have an increase. Is there an additional person?
I think there were two positions, the administrative assistant and the clerical.
Yeah, if you notice, we dropped the administrative assistant.
Where?
So to explain that.
Yeah, but it's still there.
Yes.
But zeroed.
Zeroed.
Where?
Look at the FD, the TA FD line.
Okay.
Oh, what happened now?
We don't have one anymore.
And then we hired someone?
We hired a new clerk. She starts tomorrow.
Yeah, but that was to take over a previous position.
So you used to total eighty-two and now totals seventy-four.
Seventy-three, eight, seventy-five, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's for two people?
It's two people.
Okay, so that's fine. We got rid of that position and it combined into two clerical positions.
That's why we have a hundred and five percent increase on that.
Correct. Minus one hundred percent in one, plus a hundred and five in here.
Motion to approve in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-six.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, tab three, page nine, town council.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We should just be in order now.
No, I've made my own order.
All in favor?
I tabs.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, tab seven, page ten.
It's not in order.
Technology board.
So we, this is a reduction in, in, in that TA FD budget, ten thousand to five thousand?
Yes.
I mean, we okay? We talked to the department heads there, we're all right with that change?
Well, I'm the department head here, so.
This was, um...
Chris, where is it?
Chris came in.
That was Chris Allabout? Okay, that's fine. So motion to approve in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and four dollars.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, tab eight, eleven is the town clerk's budget. Tab eight, page twelve is the board of registrars. Tab nine, page thirteen is the con con.
Yeah. So the only thing that I have is a solid, I have discrepancy in the salary just because the board had voted a raise mid-year. And then it's an additional, and I think that is too much for me to move forward with, so I'm, I'm going to abstain from this budget.
Um, this is, I mean, the general, the general comment on this would be this, this was a position covered under the wage and classification study and as a result of that, um, as a result of the wage and classification study, which we looked at twenty positions in town, we discovered a number of positions in the community that weren't paid in line with neighboring communities and weren't paid in line with the qualifications for the job and the education required for the job and the skill levels. And there's a pretty scientific study that, actually, in a couple of positions, we, we regraded ourselves because we disagreed with the grade and, and some of the grades went up, some went down. But, you know, we also looked at what other communities were paying. And in the case of the conservation commission, you know, we just, we concluded that, that we were paying our conservation agent considerably less than other communities. So there was a mid-year adjustment and as a result of the wage, which was kind of arbitrary, I think, but and as a result of the wage and classification study, there was another increase that, that brought the position in line with what other communities are paying for the, for the conservation agent. And we, you know, we, we did vote to adopt the wage and classification study and this is just a reflection of what was voted and accepted at a previous meeting, so.
Well, where I was not involved in any of these decisions. Can I abstain also? At least you with the vote.
Um, and I'm, I'm supportive of the budget.
Because all these, all these increases, you know, increase, increase in salary.
You don't need two votes. You need one vote. You're both abstaining. One vote is the majority.
Because I wasn't involved.
No, I know, no.
I was on the board when the initial increase or the, the initial increase of salary was made back in June, July, last year, August, I don't know when.
I don't either.
Okay, October, October. So, and then I had no input into the Wage and Classification Act adoption that was made the week or two before I was elected. So for me to make comments on this solely arbitrary, you know, arbitrary.
Yeah, I know, and I, I just, you know, the, the one thing I'll, and I was very involved in the process, I was very involved in the process. And, you know, I will say that it was, um, you know, we had first, we first had a pretty comprehensive study done. We paid a consultant, how much?
Ten hundred.
Ten thousand dollars to look at every, every position in the town and, and we got a very comprehensive study that, you know, looked at our town, looked at the positions in our town, looked at the skill levels required for every position, assigned a, I'll call it a, well, it's a grade which is based on skill level and work environment and education and, you know, physical labor and, and all of that stuff. And graded every position and then looked at area of community, so, um, you know, we're looking to adjust the employees. We're looking to keep good employees by paying them fairly and by paying them what they could get someplace else. employees by paying them fairly and by paying them what they could get someplace else. And in the town of Akushnet, we're never going to be the, um, we're never going to be the highest paid community, but we want, we want to be, we want to be average.
Right, I understand that.
And significantly below average.
But I also don't think that we can always afford to pay everybody with other people who get paid in Metropoison or Marion or wherever this wage and classification study compared us to. So, um, you know, so I would take that into consideration too.
No, we looked at, I think there were twenty communities there, and some communities you look at and you say, you know, we're not this one, but geez, that one is us. And, um...
Well, as I was not involved, I...
I know, I know, I know.
It's arbitrary, you know.
Okay, well, I'm in favor and...
You'll second it?
I'll second.
Oh, no.
I'll make a motion and second it and then vote in favor, if that's appropriate.
I don't think you can do that.
I don't know.
Probably not. So you want, you want to...
Well, if I need to, if I need, if we need a second vote.
Not a vote.
You just need to second the motion.
I second the motion, yeah.
All in favor?
There you go.
Aye.
Goes against? Aye.
Oh, you abstained.
Okay, same.
No, it's very different. If you vote against, we do not approve this budget. If you vote for, if you abstain, the budget's approved.
So I'll make it simple, I'll abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. For discussion somewhere else.
Soil Board budget, pay tab ten, page fourteen.
Motion to approve.
Tab ten, page fourteen.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just because it's, I know that some people at home might be saying, you know, selectmen gas was reading awful amounts. If the amount hasn't changed from one, the recommended to the request, that's the reason why I'm not reading, because they're equal to each other, there's no change. I just want to be clear, the reason why I'm voting is because the dollar value has changed from the department request from what's being recommended because of change in workouts, the lent, the leap year and all that stuff like that.
Hold on.
I'm being a little more specific with reading the dollar amount so that we know exactly what's been voted.
Uh, Board of Appeals?
Motion to approve.
Is that ours?
Yeah, we owe this here. Motion to approve.
So I'll second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, tab three, page seventeen, town buildings.
Yep, actually, the only question that I have for Mr. Noble is we, although he's got a big difference in it, so the department request was eighteen thousand, five hundred, and it's eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one, and that was a huge increase from the previous year from ten thousand, five hundred.
They requested been three part-timers this summer and...
Chipped it back.
We chipped it back to two.
Thank you.
Motion. The number's two eighteen, eight thirty-eight.
Motion to approve in the amount of two hundred and eighteen, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, tab thirteen, page eighteen, police department.
Where do you want me to start? So, the administrative assistant, can you explain what happened there? I don't recall the police chief talking about the, the jump. So the administrative assistant used to be fiscal year two thousand and nineteen vote was in the amount of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and sixteen. Now it's forty-six thousand, seven hundred.
She went from part-time to full-time.
Okay, that's what this is?
Yeah.
Part-time, full-time?
Yeah. And then Julie's recalculated the number properly.
Oh, okay, so part-time, full-time.
The change in the dispatches, the reduction in overtime.
Mm-hmm.
Almost offsets. This one still might come back and have a change. So when your contract gets accepted, we still may be able to go in and change this.
So the overtime, eh, the chief had put in, let's just call it three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, we were looking at the numbers, it's not just a shy on the, right, not even a hundred bucks. And then that's been cut by about seventy-eight thousand dollars?
Correct.
From the TAFD? Is that legit?
That is legit based upon the preliminary pricing of the contract. We haven't got the final on the contract.
Okay.
When we have the final pricing on the contract, we can firm up those numbers.
Okay, that's fine.
Part of the problem you're gonna run into in the police budget is how quickly will they get to the civilian dispatchers? Because that'll make a big difference in what your overtime number is.
I know.
So this puts a little pressure on getting there at some point quicker or as quickly as possible.
The reduction is just making me very cautious, that's all. I want to make sure that we're not reducing to the point where, you know, seven months...
I still think there's actually too much room here.
Okay.
But I'd rather to answer to...
If you feel comfortable that there's enough room. And the, which one, oh, the cadets. Are we, is, does that suffice the cadets line item? Because I know we sent some folks out. Oh, wait a minute, you're at zero. He's got forty-six thousand. What are we doing? I thought we were sending three guys to...
That's in this year's budget.
Sorry?
It's in this year's budget.
This is this year's budget?
FY nineteen.
That was in the previous, so that was...
Right. So FY twenty, um...
So that's seventy-two. Okay, I see the beginning.
Is the chief good with this change? I don't know if Julie has talked to the chief. Okay, she should. Because he just had to pay for vacation, so we may not have confirmed too. I'm sort of waiting truthfully to adjust this budget upon the adoption of the contract. So if you want to postpone voting on this budget, that's fine with me. As long as you allow me to publish a budget, you can make any amendment you want to, but at a certain point, I have to go...
Was that delayed?
I have, this week, I want to send the warrant out for press this week. So the finance committee meets on the tenth. I should have a final number by the tenth. So if there's any further adjustments.
May?
No.
What the heck are we at right now?
We're on the eighth. Two more days.
The day of the election.
So we gotta... So we're meeting with the finance committee once tonight? Do we have, do we have this? All I can tell, well, you can meet with the finance committee, it's posted. Yep. Okay, I expect to have a firmer number on the police budget.
I'm okay, I'm okay.
I'm okay at this time.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing the right things and we're not voting the budget against the department on the request because I don't want to face backlash from that.
Okay, what I'm suggesting to you is if you pass this budget the way it stands with wages versus expenses, I have, I think enough money to make it through the year.
Your budget's actually higher in the bottom dollar.
Correct. I think I'm okay, and I think I got a...
Less, less.
Twenty-four, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, you're right. I think I've got enough.
I'm like, wait a minute, I'm like, are you...
I think I have enough of a, a reserve in...
So there is, there's an increase there.
So if you voted this, I would certainly, why didn't you vote it as a not-to-exceed number? And then I can have flexibility at readjusting.
Do you want to do that though? Because what happens if we're, you can, you feel...
I'm never gonna exceed this number.
Motion to approve up to two million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars for the police department.
I'll second.
Is that for value of contract? That's the value of contract. From there. We think. I want a firm number.
Do all those in favor?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tab fourteen, page nineteen.
Okay, can I stop, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, no.
This is fiery mess. I don't know what's going on because we're gonna ratify contracts of full-time positions. I think that number's gonna change a bit. And then we have a, an explosion in part-time EMTS. My budget says in the previous years, we're roughly fifty-five hundred bucks and we're at a hundred and fifty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
What the heck's that?
We're gonna turn on mutual aid.
Well, so we're gonna go to different communities?
We're gonna turn on mutual aid. Has this changed from what the chief presented?
We've already been there.
No, this is exactly what the chief presented.
Yeah, but we already got mutual aid turned on for New Bedford.
No, we only, we turned it on for two calls a day.
Up to two calls a day was what will, what our mutual aid agreement says?
Right, we had no agreement, we have a verbal. We turned off mutual aid to New Bedford some years ago. We turned it on two calls a day above one ninety-five. Okay, and I think even if we turn it on full, we're not gonna go above, we're not gonna go below one ninety-five. So just the distance decision. Right.
So, okay.
No, go ahead, shoot, I'm still...
So mutual aid is gonna offset this rise in part-time EMTS?
Yes.
So we anticipating that the money that we make from these extra calls is gonna offset that?
Yes.
And we're gonna come out with a profit?
Yes. We never talk profit, Dave.
We're gonna come out with a surplus? We're gonna come out with a surplus?
Yes.
It goes into, um, when we do those mutual aid calls, it goes into the EMS reserve receipt account.
Okay.
So if you look at the fire and EMS department, it's roughly, what's your bottom line number? So-called a million. And the last calculations that Mr. Noble and I have done, they're running about sixty percent of their budget is covered by EMS reserve receipt account.
Okay, like six hundred grand.
It's a revenue generator?
Mm-hmm.
Up to six hundred thousand dollars, about what we generate, so, you know, sixty, roughly sixty percent of the budget is fed through the ambulance calls.
Right, so it goes up for the fund and they can take it out because we have to pay the...
Pay the bills and all that stuff like that. We buy like an ambulance and things of that nature. We sometimes take like, you know, fifty grand a year out of EMS reserve receipts to pay for it.
Okay.
Like some of the articles you, we've approved, it says EMS reserve receipt. We fund that out of the EMS reserve receipts, revenues that they're drawing in on their own.
Almost like a...
Basically what I'm telling...
A quasi-enterprise.
Yeah, basically it is.
It is.
Basically what they do is it's costing taxpayers four hundred thousand dollars for a fire EMS stack. That's pretty close to say that, right?
Everything else is bringing it...
They do, they do a great job of whatever. I'm very pleased with them. So that number, if that, that huge twenty-six hundred percent increase is legit?
I don't remember this discussion with the chief.
I don't either.
I've never seen something.
We haven't changed anything.
I don't remember this discussion with the chief.
I suspect we're... I tried calling the chief, but he's going in for surgery tomorrow, so he's not answering himself. Um, you know, he's probably, you know, knocked himself out.
If this is a not-to-exceed number, that's fine with me, and then you can rearrange the numbers if you want to.
I, I believe the budget number, I mean, you look at the budget numbers, I, we've done the calculation when the chief was in here and it did come up, I backchecked it to merge of the two entities prior to negotiations. So it, the number looks good, all the numbers look good, so I'll make a motion to approve the fire EMS, the budget in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, tab fifteen, page twenty, building, building.
I will have to abstain from this budget as I did for his raise.
Um, is there a motion on this budget?
Well, uh, yeah, um, you know, once again, salary increases is something that the town's gonna have to look at in the future. We only have so much money, and I understand that, you know, he was, um, a position was dissolved and, you know, the building commissioner received his, uh, his increase of twenty thousand dollars because of that? Or is he kind of doing two jobs or is that my understanding?
Well, a couple of things, you know, um, we were losing an employee we think does a great job for us to another community. We countered the offer he had in hand, we had a copy of the letter in hand saying, "Come work for us, we'll pay you this much." Um, we had a copy of that letter and we made him an offer to counter that offer at something less than the offer he had in hand, less money, less vacation time, um, and we kept the employee who likes working for the town of Akushnet. Um, so, so that happened, that was part of it, but the job I think is bigger than, than even the wage and classification study talked about. So there's that, we're trying to get the job to fit into the wage and classification study, but I think, you know, the, the bigger thing with this job, with this person, is we've realized hundreds of thousands of dollars in, is hundreds of thousands in the iteration?
Probably too small.
Okay, in, in grants that he's worked for, for this community to make us more energy efficient, to do things like the lighting in these buildings and insulation in buildings and, um, what we're saving on energy as a community as a result of this employee's efforts. I mean, we, at the time, looked at this employee and said, "This is somebody we need to keep." And for that reason...
And I wouldn't debate that, you know, I wasn't here once again.
I know, agree.
This was decided.
Agree.
When people hear this, of course, they can get a little unnerved, I guess is the word, that, you know, we're just spending, 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 that sort of thing, throwing salaries around, but, um...
Can I make...
You know, Jim, Jim is, you know, giving a good service to the town. I've never heard, you know, I hear that from everybody, so I have not opposed, you know, in that way to this, you know.
And there, just, just give you one more sort of related story. There have been circumstances where we've had employees that have had offers from other communities and we've, good employees that we liked, that we would have wanted to keep, and we've looked at those offers and said, "We can't get anywhere near that."
Right.
And, "And we're gonna have to let you go." I mean, we, we'd love to keep you...
Well, we only have so much money.
We only have so, so, we, so, you know, it's, you make a decision, and there, there are times you say, "You know what, we can't pay that, but we'll pay this," and then there are other times you look at it and you say, "We're not gonna get any, we can't get anywhere near that." For the position, for that position, I, you know, it's, it's, it's nice that, that the community can pay you that, we can't as the town of Akushnet, and, and we believe we can, we can fill your position with somebody else at, at something less than that, and, and that's what we've done, not naming names or positions, but in this case, we decided that this was an employee that we, we needed to keep, so.
Understood, understood.
So we have motion, I don't know, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
And an aye, and an aye, that passes.
An aye, I understand.
And abstention.
Uh, tab three, page twenty-one, Steeler of Weights and Measures.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, EMS, tab sixteen, page twenty-two.
Just got an extra additional fifteen hundred that wasn't in the budget before.
This is the, the agency, not the EMS.
That's EMA.
EMA.
I'm sorry, EMA.
That's EMA.
Apologies.
Emergency Management Agency, that's the little building on Hope Street over there?
Okay, yep, yep.
Mr. Bergeron is the director.
All right.
So it says, we, we, a couple of years ago, we put some salary in because the board felt there was, you know, these guys come in, they're in storm-related issues and, you know, hurricanes and blizzards and everything else, and they're, they're bunking down there for several hours, so we decided that, you know, when we had those circumstances, we could pay them something, right?
Right.
To make it worthwhile so we don't lose that. I'm just, I'm just, I don't know where the fifteen hundred's going to now. It's a new line.
Who's that going to?
Jerry.
That's Mr. Bergeron, okay.
Just one person?
It's, it's one, it's potentially one person. It's an hourly thing, he puts in per hour. It could go to Jerry, it could go to Ed.
Karen.
Yeah.
Karen. And the rest of the people volunteer on that? What, they go to... The rabies clinic, they were, they were directing track...
They would have been paid, but they would have been paid out of that rabies clinic budget.
Okay.
They do a lot of volunteer work too. I think that was the talk for the board, was to bring something into their budget, a thousand bucks, wasn't peanuts. I mean, you're talking three, four people, for a year, you're talking a couple hundred bucks. Come on. I mean, as much as everybody appreciates volunteerism and...
We had, I mean, Jerry had to stay in the junior center overnight.
They do, they do. As far as the shelters go, when we opened up the shelter, that's, that's the reason why we did it, it's storm-related, not, not, you know, a traffic...
And sometimes we get that money back and sometimes we don't.
Right, okay.
Motion to approve this budget?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I second.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor? Tab seventeen, page twenty-three, Animal Control.
Motion to approve in the amount of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, discussion, I didn't ask for discussion. Okay. Uh, tab eighteen, page twenty-four.
Forestry.
Forestry.
Motion to approve.
Ten thousand, nine hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tab nineteen, page twenty-five, Old Colony.
Dare I ask, I mean, as much as I love two hundred thousand dollar reductions, actually, that's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar reduction, as much as I like it, who gave you permission to do it?
The assessment came through from the district.
Oh, so this was their preliminary type?
Correct.
Yeah, they're giving us...
That was a pretty, that was a pretty good drop.
Yeah, we're not sending as many students.
Well, that's, Kristen came in from the school, said that there was a change from Old Colony, whether, whether...
So we've adjusted it in the budget. The only thing is, don't get used to it, because it could go back the other way next year.
Right. Yeah, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand's probably ten percent.
It is, it's, that's a pretty good guess, right? Hundred-and-twenty, twelve-eight for a per student, they're right around that block. So I'll make a motion to approve the Old Colony budget in the amount of one million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Wait, wait, wait. I have one million, seven-eight-two, five-thirty-one.
That's not what my budget says. I'm sorry, I apologize. Department total, fourteen million, seventy-two.
Yes, the school department.
Got it, okay, I apologize. Not by the Old Colony. Thank you.
Do we vote that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, tab 19, same page, 25, Christian School Department, fourteen, seven-eight-two, five-thirty-one.
We, uh, we approve something, let me, is this included?
The article, the article.
That's not included in their budget, this is just their budget. That was articles for the school.
We're gonna vote on that at the time, yeah.
I, I think Kristen, you know, she came in, she talked, as you guys, you guys had a meeting at the schools. You can see, you know, it's, not that we have a detailed budget, but you can see all the, all the high schools and things that, that are impacting the budget. I mean, the HAVEN's gone up substantially, right?
Originally, the Finance Committee had offered a two-point-five, they came in three-point-six. The Finance Committee, after the presentation, went back and made two-point-five plus a hundred-thousand, which comes out at three-point-one-two as a percent, and that's where they've settled.
So the budget is a good number?
Yes.
Fourteen million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-one?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, tab 20, page 26, GPW.
So, again, you look at the fiscal year TAFD, you recommend that that's the changes.
The road materials down, we still have some here.
They took all the road materials, the engineering, the police details, and put them into the article.
This is still one-twenty here, though.
So...
Or has that changed?
No. Now that's what we, always had, one-twenty.
See, the two-hundred, one-twenty. See, we went from one-twenty, two-hundreds, and one-twenty.
No, it's one-twenty's where we are now.
One-twenty's where we are now. And I have talked about this with Dan, and Dan approved these changes.
And you've got, you've got an article as well for two-twenty.
Correct.
So, just, just so the board knows, because I, I watched that meeting, it's, this is not what you think it is, though. Because we're taking two-hundred-and-fifty, do we say, Mr. Noble, two-twenty for the road?
Two-twenty at the moment.
Two-twenty for the road materials. I mean, for chapter ninety, complement chapter ninety. I don't know how that article's worded, if we can use it.
It's gonna cover engineering, construction material, police details.
Okay. If, I don't know, again, if he could be taking it out to use for drainage. The original, when Dan came in and originally spoke to the board early on, very early on in the budget process, he added the three, all related to each other is the three. So he's got police details, he's got engineering fees, and he's got road materials. He talked about that increase, that eighty-thousand-dollar increase to road materials, that was to do drainage work.
You could do that, too.
So as long as, you know, you're just taking away from the road, complementing chapter ninety, because road, drainage is totally different than road.
I can write the article, "Motion to include the drainage." If that's your desire, that could be done.
But we're not, then we're not doing more roads, we're, we're doing drainage and roads. I would leave it the way it is, for now. I'm not saying anything, I just want the board to understand that that increase that Mr. Manon put in his budget was to do act more drainage, the big drainage problems like off Mendel and Gambit, and we've done some significant, the DBW's done some significant work as far as drainage goes on, on roadways that were kind of going on the water and detrimental rainstorms, right? Flood out the road, maybe it's...
Yeah, they did one up in my, my main street.
Right, so they go in and they dig up the side of the road and make sure the water goes where it supposedly doesn't sit on the road and hydroplaning and all that. That's, that is going back to where we previously budgeted. I don't think it's that detrimental to his budget. Um, I, you know, in the future, we'll have to address it again, but I just, that's the deal with that money. It was just, it was increased, but it was cut. So extra drainage? No, we're still getting drainage work done, let's put it that way.
Should we make the article broader than it is to give him more flexibility?
I'll give, I really want the roads to be the roads, though. I want, as we want to complement the exercise tax.
Well, may I suggest this? Since you supervise that department, as the board, my recommendation is broaden the definition, but when he gets to road projects, he comes in for you, for approval from you.
He's gonna come over the road and he's gonna say, "Well, I can't do that road unless I deal with that drainage."
That's fine, so it's fine.
My recommendation, as long as it's not in the language, give you the option, but allow that approval to be...
The idea behind the article was to tar more roads, because we're falling behind.
Correct.
So I don't wanna get too caught up in, on a drain...
No, but I also don't wanna handcuff you.
No, right, that's fine. So if you can broaden the scope of the article?
Yep.
And allow, that, that'll just take a vote from us, outside of all this money. Once this money's expended, then you would have to come to us. Follow me? The budget?
Correct.
If he expends that, and he's out of money, and he's in trouble, because he's gotta do drainage, then he comes and says, "Hey, guys, you know, I wanna take so much money out of the article and spend it on this, because, um, you know..."
Screwed.
Yes. "I got a project to do, and we can't do it, because I'm out of money."
That's right. I think, I think Dan wants to speak to you about the paving projects that are scheduled for the summer.
Yep.
So I think that's a...
We should, we should discuss it.
Yep.
We should do some discussion.
It's in line with the pavement management plan, but, you know, as you know, the pavement management plan is a living document, you make adjustments as you need to.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it just gives the board flexibility. We can look at it, but say, "Well, you know what? We have other roads..."
Yes.
"...that are falling apart now."
Right.
Is there a motion on the budget, seven-twenty-one, two-forty-one?
Motion to approve the TPW budget in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-one.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Snow and ice removal, a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I need to keep doing the tab stuff, or are we all...
Street lighting?
We doing the, I'm on tab three.
Yep.
Page twenty-eight? Yeah, we are, all right. Yeah, street lighting?
Motion to approve.
Twenty-five thousand dollars?
Go ahead, if you want to second it, we'll do discussion.
Yep, I'll second it.
Discussion?
This is, the streetlights have gone down twenty-five thousand, just because we did the new streetlights, the...
LEDs are installed, and the, the net effect has been fantastic.
Where is that price?
Have we gotten actual, all of the streetlights?
All the streetlights, under a Green Communities grant secured by Jim. All of the streetlights were replaced over two years. They're all LED now, and the use of the electricity substantially reduced.
So this shows a...
Fifty percent, sir.
Thirty-five, thirty-five thousand-dollar savings every year in electrical use, as an example of...
Twenty-five, yeah.
Uh, going, I'm going back to the sixty, sixty-two thousand in fiscal seventeen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's sixty-two there to twenty-five, so thirty-five thousand dollars in savings every year for, forever. So, I mean, that's...
No, that's a huge savings.
So is there a motion to approve this at twenty-five thousand dollars?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? CMAS budgets, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
Yeah, different, dramatic difference. So curbside pickup, that was, um, recycled?
As recycled, yes.
And he had budgeted a hundred-and-eighty-seven, went down to one-twelve, and now recycling's gone through the roof, as far as price per ton?
Correct, we just negotiated a new contract. We, as you know, Howland transported to a third party. Now Waste Management bought Howland, and they're transporting it to their own facility, and have projected a seventy-five thousand-dollar savings to the town.
Okay, we, I was uninformed of that. So Waste Management bought Howland?
Bought Howland, yeah. We had to sign a contract that said, basically, not, I'm sorry, not a contract...
So the rates changed for the tonnage?
The rate changed for the recycling tonnage, yes.
Who signed that contract?
We didn't have to sign it, it was part of the deal. The Waste Management now would do, does the recycling in their own facility in Havant.
They assumed, they assumed the contract.
They assumed the contract and gave us a new estimate for the cost of recycling.
Oh, okay.
Now, I did sign that agreement, meaning that acknowledging the rate decrease, but, and that will be in your bin.
Did they get rid of the A, B, and C grades that they give us?
No, we still have to deal with that. We cannot contaminate our, our recycle, that, those rules do not change.
Right.
Uh, we, we have to be much more careful about what goes in the recycle bin. It has to really be recyclable.
Correct.
And it has to be clean.
It's crazy. I actually pulled a pizza box out of my recycle bin and put it in my garbage this morning.
Yes, well, I mean, I, it's made me a little bit more aware of what exactly I'm putting in.
Because I'm a little bit aggressive.
Well, the other problem you really run into is that you, you think, "Well, this ought to be recycling, so I'll put it in the recycle bin." It's not. And the biggest contamination is the grocery shopping bags, those are not recyclable.
And they might be doing a state ban on those, so...
Which would be nice.
Which would be helpful.
Which would be nice. I think it's great, but I think we're, as long as we keep up our efforts at education and making sure that our recycle is clean...
And this was heading in the wrong direction.
It was going...
Oh, really? Forget about it. It was going in a horrible direction, that was crisis-like.
I wanna be really honest with you, we dodged a bullet for a year. Let's see what happens.
Right, we still need to...
Motion to approve the CMAS budget in the amount of nine-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cemetery, six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council on Aging, tab 23.
Motion to approve in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Is this included? Did we get a part-time person, Heather had asked for someone else?
It's in there in the line two thousand.
What's that?
It's in line two thousand, about the third one from the top?
The twelve-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
Okay, all right.
When the two, when the two previous years...
Is there a motion?
Motion? Motion, I thought I did a motion.
Yeah, we did.
I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
See if you look over here, the previous two years, there was nothing budgeted for, so you know that's a new addition into the budget.
What position was eliminated here?
In which one are we talking?
In Council on Aging.
Program coordinator, something? Yeah, that's, we merged that with...
We merged it with that.
That's part of how those responsibilities were there in contract.
It's program coordinator.
We merged that.
It was down here.
Yeah, we put it into, we put it in the...
Tab 24, Veterans.
Mr. Chairman, this is a five percent raise, not part of wage and classification. I, I make a motion to reduce that to a two percent raise. So that line on it would read twenty thousand, sixty-four dollars. So I'm making a motion to change the veteran's salary to twenty thousand, sixty-four dollars, two percent raise.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Where'd the five percent come from? Was that requested?
That was requested by...
Previous chairman.
It falls in line with COLA increase, two percent.
Fortunately, this is what caused the previous chairman to increase the request, is he is the second lowest-paid veterans agent in the entire state.
We could talk about that some other time, though.
Okay.
I'm not here to discuss employees' issues.
That's why. And this wasn't part of wage and classification, it was not.
And we, we're also talking about potentially merging this with another talent, working jointly.
We, we tried to do that, and that does not, it's not going to work.
It's not going to work.
We should look at it now, they got a good veterans agent.
I don't believe the door is open to us any longer, but I will inquire.
You should explore it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, tab 25.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
We, we have to approve the dollar amount, it's just gonna change that?
Can you make that reduction?
Yeah, whatever it is.
This is probably something we should look at and talk about as well, and maybe bring back. Was that twenty, I wrote over it, twenty-six, sixty? Twenty thousand, sixty-four. It's two percent from what it was last year.
So a reduction of five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars?
Make a motion to approve the budget in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
I'll second.
All right, discussion? The only comment, I'd like to see that information on comparable salaries, and I think if we've gonna, if we've gonna talk about, I mean, I think, I think if we've gonna, we should talk about this and maybe evaluate what we're paying, and whether we should be paying more, so...
We need to talk about a lot of different things.
Well, we need, yeah, let's, let's do it.
There's a lot of things that are out there with veterans complaining, and certifications and things of that nature.
Well, let's, let's explore it, let's explore it at some point, and I, second lowest in the state's not where I wanna be, and, well, maybe sooner than that. Let's, let's, let's talk about it. I, I don't know a lot about this, so let's explore it. Tab 25 is the Library. Two-seventy-eight, four-twelve.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I, I will abstain from this, as we voted a mid-year increase in her contract, and additional was given, so I'm just gonna keep myself out.
Okay. This is, again, another, another wage and classification. The Library trustees, the Library Board, lobbied for an increase to the, to the position, supported it with comparable information. It was, you know, was supported by the wage and classification study, and, you know, we've got, we've got good people, we wanna keep good people, and Librarians is a good person, so...
I'm not saying that.
I know, I know, I'm sorry, I'm not saying, I'm sorry, I didn't intend that.
Well, that's, that's...
I didn't intend, I didn't intend.
Right, it's, it's, I mean, it's not even about that, I, I know the individual well, I think she does an outstanding job, it's just, you know, a raise is a raise, and exorbitant raises are just not something I'm into doing, because it creates conflict amongst other folks.
And I, I didn't intend to ask, I didn't intend, I wasn't trying to say that.
I, I'm not saying that, I'm just trying to clear my name, because I believe she doesn't actually...
So the only, the only comment, the only comment would be that the, the Library trustees have a director that they really like.
Right, and she's done a great job.
And the position is supported, the proposed increase is supported by the wage and classification study, and, and when we evaluated it, and I think what's proposed is actually less than the library was asking for, but it is a, it's a, it's a, it's an increase, absolutely.
Well, certainly. I'll make a motion to approve the...
I would second.
...library department budget.
The total, two-seventy-eight, four-twelve, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recreation, twenty thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars.
Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Park Department?
Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Historical Commission?
Motion to approve? I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Miscellaneous, five thousand dollars, compensated balances, what is that?
We're back in tab three again?
Tab three again, yeah.
Compensated balances, yeah, five grand.
I think that's, um, I'm trying to remember last year, Julia told us...
I can't remember.
Me either, but it's a certain item she uses for...
I remember the discussion, I don't remember what the answer was. I remember talking about it, I don't remember.
You could ask her.
Can we find out, just get, get a message?
But in the meantime...
In the meantime, we should, it's only five thousand dollars, we shouldn't score it.
Actually, I will get, I will get your answer, because I have it written down.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can I, well, you just, you just brought something, so the light bulb just came off. I'll remind Mr. Noble, it's a budget that we did not vote.
The cable budget?
No, sir. Um, the assessors' budget?
Yes.
It's mislabeled, she is labeled, the principal assessor is labeled assistant assessor, the correct...
Principal assessor.
Principal assessor is their correct title, so I think that we need to make that change. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's in the, the unit's chart of accounts as the assistant, when we update the chart of accounts, that'll get taken care of.
No problem, just wanted to bring that.
No, I appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry, actually, the total of, this is all, this is all miscellaneous, the total's sixteen, one sixty-six, which includes that compensated balances, so that's, that's what we're...
Motion to approve.
I'm embarrassed, I can't remember what that...
Is there a second?
Sick time balances.
Sick time.
Buyback. Sick time buyback.
Sick time buyback, okay.
I'll second.
So discussion, anybody that's got sick time that, under the contract, can sell it back to the town, this is how we fund it, five thousand dollars. Retirement of debt, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, that is, the police station and the ambulance.
Don't have much of a choice, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, retirement of debt.
Motion to approve.
Topless principal, bottoms interest, is a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Second.
Second.
All in fa, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Retirement and Medicare, a million, five. Uh, tab twenty-nine.
Pensions?
Uh, pensions is the title, I'm sorry, pensions.
Motion to approve.
I'll second, so, we had an increase of a hundred thousand, one eighty...
Nine-two-seven-twenty-seven?
Nineteen, okay.
And I suspect that's just calculated and dictated to us, they, they tell us what we go.
Here's your assessment.
Here's your assessment, and we write a check.
Okay.
So, the important part is, by the way, we get a discount by paying early, so, this goes out literally the first check of the fiscal year.
Okay.
We pay once a year or quarterly? We pay once a year.
Wow.
Well, we get a hell of a discount, so we take it.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Did we vote that?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, insurance? Substantial savings here, Mr. Noble, we talked about that.
Thank you, we bid out, uh, workers' compensation, we bid out the, um...
That's crazy.
Insurance this year, um, and the, the only thing we had an increase in was workers' comp, um, but it wasn't terrible. But overall, we, we did very well on insurance this year.
We saved, we saved, workers' comp really went down, nothing else really went down, too dramatic?
I'm looking at the nineteen, the nineteen seventy, what's the original question, nineteen seventy, that was a guess, our first guess at it, right?
Correct.
Right.
So we save forty, we saved fifteen thousand dollars.
Workers' comp, we, we never came that close, so, it's sort of interesting, I cut the budget, but I also cut the cost.
But your original estimate was an increase, and then, I know you worked it, and...
So, motion to approve in the amount of one million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, reserve account next, water reserve account, hundred, uh, hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars.
So, we found a public works water reserve fund, so... So this is the, the reserve fund for unforeseen, this is kind of, this is kind of ludicrous, right? So we do fifty thousand for SUE, which is a third of our water uses, we do a hundred grand in golf, but we only do twenty grand in water.
You wanna change it?
It's a little absurd.
Well, we never did anything before.
So I know, but don't you think it's a little, little backwards, I mean, water's huge.
This is what Kathy came in with, and it's your projection.
I know, it's, that's, all that is a reserve, so it's out of the surplus that they have, and, and, you know, and they got a decent surplus.
Yeah, yes, that's a question.
We don't have that big of a surplus in SUE, that's the bigger concern. I'm just asking the board that if you look at this, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, that water is all... What? It's really a two million dollar budget, right?
Well, this is the first time we've actually done this.
So it's a one point five million dollar budget? And we're using twenty thousand dollars of reserve fund for seen emergency uses, so you get a water main break, twenty, you know how far twenty grands get you? To the store and back, again.
We've had one there before, we've always done it.
I know, I know, and I think it's a good idea that we put this, so you don't have to call for special town meetings and over, over something like that. What I'm saying is, you know, this probably should be raised to a minimum fifty like the sewers.
Fine.
And even that's, you know, it's not gonna get spent unless it takes, it takes a board of selectmen vote.
Does this, this comes out of their reserve funds, or it comes out of the water?
No, this, this comes out of...
Surplus.
It's allocation of surplus.
Okay.
Okay, that doesn't mean that you spend it.
It's the same as golf, it's a reserve.
Now, would they, if they needed access to the reserve fund in the middle of the year, what's that process?
Requires town meeting vote?
Town meeting vote.
What you do is...
Any surplus, anytime you spend from surplus, it requires town meeting vote.
Doesn't hurt anything to make this note.
Correct, that's why we do golf, and that's why we did SUE, and I looked at this number, and I'm like...
It feels like, we never did it before.
What, what would happen is if, if you had a situation where there was a need to draft reserve, they'd go for a reserve fund transfer. Then it's a meeting, they would actually...
You'd have to reimburse, correct?
We have done that before.
My recommendation would be to at least raise it to fifty thousand dollars, it's not hurting anybody, it's not, it's not spending surplus, it's a reserve for unforeseen, right?
Yes.
Fifty's better than twenty.
Alright, this, uh, where's that go to? Two fourteen, five one five?
Thirty grand. Got thirty grand, well, let's see what they, any other changes? Are you mumbling, Mr. Noble, or are you talking to us?
Are there any other changes?
Um, are there any other changes, he says? I don't see anything significant that you may have done, so, no, I'm serious, looking through, I've had some things circled. It's gonna impact, well, you've got it broken down, so, it's just fifty?
That's fine.
That doesn't change anything in the future, does it?
Nope.
As far as their budget goes, Mr. Noble?
No, it does not.
It does not, so that one just goes to fifty, it's just no one has to figure out.
Correct.
But this doesn't change the total, that doesn't come all the way down to the bottom?
No, because it's...
It's a separate, it's a separate total, okay, okay?
They each their own designated, you know, level.
So, so the bottom doesn't change?
So the forty-five, fifty, it goes all the way through to this one million.
One hundred and fifty.
Yeah, and I know...
Is there a motion on the water reserve fund and on the water division at fifty thousand and one eighty-four, five one five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, this one's not labeled, this is gonna be...
This is still water, this is still water continuing. So I would say either put the whole water budget...
I know, that's what I was gonna do, I was gonna move right down.
Fifty, that, you know, the thirty there into the bottom line, so, one, seven, four, five, five, thirty-seven.
So this number, fourteen, eighty-eight, five, forty-five, I wonder if that increases?
So, yes, it...
That's what I was gonna say.
That wasn't to the...
All the way down, down to the bottom.
I just added the thirty into here, so add the, okay.
So a seven, forty-five, that's all.
One million, seven hundred, forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven.
The extra thirty being in the reserve.
Extra thirty being in the reserve, is there a motion on that?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, sewer department, let's just go right to the total, because we learned a lesson in the last...
Six ninety-five.
Six ninety-five, nine eighty-seven. Biggest changes?
We have a business manager new line item in here?
Yes.
What's this about?
Well, that's Kathy, as you know.
Who's Kathy?
Kathy Salwa, and she moved out of the union.
Oh!
So you had to put her in a separate line.
That's not her salary, though.
That's what's assigned to sewer. Of course, that is assigned to sewer.
She's another one that's been paid out of different...
I hate that. I know, I know, I know.
Well, next year, right?
Next year, I got the message.
There aren't a lot of examples of it, there used to be more, but it's just very confusing to...
Oh, it is.
To split a person between multiple departments and the salary through multiple departments.
Unfortunately, we don't have a choice really here, because of the three deposits that they're responsible for, so...
Could I, could I ask, I have a question, what is the sewer pumping to Bedford, is that something we have to pay?
That's how we get rid of it.
Right, so it increased seventeen.
Yep.
Same as water, water's got a big line item, one point something, we're in the business.
We're in the retailer, they're the wholesaler.
Okay, you said, so we pass that to the, to the rate consumers?
Yes.
Okay.
Total sewer, six hundred and ninety-five, nine eighty-seven?
And most of the change is the sewer pumping charge from the city to Bedford.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, golf, we've got two line items, let's load them together, we get the reserve fund, a hundred thousand dollars, and we've got their budget, which is five twenty-five, five twenty-five, five seventy-nine.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? This isn't the complete budget, this can't be the complete budget. On what? Golf, this is just salary.
Should be several pages of golf.
Yeah, alright, so the next, oh, I'm sorry, let me...
Forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven.
Alright, so we get three pages, so let's go down, so the total is million, four sixty-four, one seventy-three.
Motion to approve the golf enterprise fund in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, and last is cable receipts reserved?
Yes, we have to introduce this one, it's been this year, we've never done this before, this is a new one. State changed the way they wanted this accounted for, so it's been set up as receipts reserved.
They being the state, of course.
State, correct, and so you have to now appropriate a budget at town meeting, it is based on the receipts reserved. In other words, cable pays a franchise fee to the town, the town will take it as a receipts reserved account, and it can appropriate, uh, for cable operations salaries and supplies, and since there's never really been a need to do that, because they just had a lump sum of money?
Right.
We now have to do it, here I can get mine, yep.
Well, that's where salaries are on?
Correct, and we, and in all sincerity, the supplies number is right out of thin air.
Okay.
Because I have no idea what they're gonna need for equipment next year.
Should we do that as a, can we do that as a, as one of those ones where they need the vote of the board of selectmen as well?
You would still need a vote of the board of selectmen, just... For supplies, absolutely. This is, this would be, you know, I, I would say to you, you could establish a number that's routine, but a number above five, ten, whatever number you want, has to go through the board.
Yeah, I think it needs to be controlled somehow.
I think, I think what I would advise you, if you'd like to know any expense coming out of cable other than salaries that's previously...
I would.
But any expense for supplies you'd like to be informed, what is the threshold you'd like to presentation on? Ten thousand, twenty thousand, what's the number, you want me to use my head? Because a couple of, couple of grand, if they come to me and say they need to replace a switch, I'm not gonna go to you for it.
We've normally, we've normally done that with, with the previous town administrator, where we said, you know what, we don't need to be bothered with, you know, reserve fund transfers, but as far as this goes, I mean, I'm, five grand's fine with me, if they give you five thousand dollars worth of...
I think, to be honest, you notice when they wanted to come in and spend sixty grand, I put that before you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was a decision of, you know, this is a lot of money, and I don't wanna be the only one on, with my neck out.
I'm comfortable.
So when they replace switches for twelve hundred dollars, or they've replaced a video camera for a couple of grand, I haven't done anything with it, other than just sign it.
Yeah, up to five thousand.
I, I, I agree with the five, um, the only hesitation on that, though, is five thousand dollar increments up to ninety thousand dollars is a lot.
You don't want split bidding.
Yeah, well, yeah, they ain't Mickey Mouse.
The intent, the intent...
Yeah, I know.
You know what, I'll tell you what, I think in fairness, any expense, expense out of the supplies budget, you will be notified.
Okay.
That's good, that's good, yeah.
Period.
But you can give them approval up to five thousand dollars, that'll whack.
Yeah.
You know, like I just said, don't give me five every week.
In this digital age, five grand ain't much.
Five every week, you know what I mean?
Right, Dave, five grand in this digital age, goes nowhere.
I think, I think we've been...
We done with all our budgets?
I think we've been through, can I get a motion, we voted individual budgets, can I get a motion to approve the annual town budget as presented? So that would be everything in the aggregate?
Not as presented, as adjusted.
As adjusted, as adjusted, as adjusted.
So moved.
So I'll second. Any discussion?
We covered everything, right?
We did?
Yes, we did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, next article on the agenda is a request to requisition the civil service exam for the police chief. Um, as we know, our chief has announced he's gonna retire in November, and we need to reach out and get a civil service exam for that position, the results of a civil service exam for that position, so, and we need...
It's actually a promotional exam.
Promotional exam, okay, and we need to, uh, we need to get together sooner rather than later to talk about...
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, motion would be to request from, from civil service the police chief exam requisition.
Oh, I thought you just corrected that, it has to be a pro, internal promotional exam.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm reading what this...
That's why I'm, I know, that's, that's pretty cheap.
To request from civil service the, one more time?
Internal promotional exam.
Internal promotional exam. To request from civil service the internal promotional exam would be the correct motion.
So moved.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? Um, we're gonna get to design the criteria, the assessment center, all of those...
Assessment center, what, how you wanna do the interview publicly, at what point you wanna do that, that's all.
We can figure that out still.
What I'm saying here on this is that you're limiting the service, service exam to internal applicants.
Okay, that's correct.
That's, that's fine, I'm just making sure that that is your intent.
Mm-hmm, that, I will say, that wouldn't have been my intent, I think we need to, I think we need a bigger picture, not, not eliminating anybody, but, but I think, I think limiting it to internal candidates only is, um, is not what we should be doing.
Well, we're gonna have a vote for the fire chiefs and for that.
Yeah, I know, we are, yeah, we are.
That's an article.
Oh, that's civil service, yeah. This is, they can now.
We voted to table that article.
That's correct.
We're hiring new.
So, uh, the motion's second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, town administrators are for it.
I have nothing to do for you.
Alright. Our next meeting will be April tenth, twenty nineteen, at seven oh nine, um, we've got a couple of...
No, that's wrong.
Beg your pardon? Twenty-six, twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
April twenty, I'm sorry, no, we do have a meeting on the tenth.
We don't need to do that.
Oh, I apologize.
We don't need to do, if you don't wanna do it, you don't have to.
We don't, we just voted on the budgets, we voted on the articles, we're all set.
So your next regularly scheduled meeting would be April twenty-third, and also a joint meeting with the, the school committee for the appointment of our representative on the old column, we will...
Yeah, so we're all set with...
Alright, so we're not joining the finance committee?
We're not joining, we'll cancel that posting.
So we've got a couple of executive session...
The moderator conducted that meeting.
Oh, yes, that's correct, moderator conducts that joint meeting.
Okay, perfect, alright, so, executive session. Uh, we're gonna go to executive session under general law thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A three, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations, police union contract, fire EMS contract. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, uh, as the chair so declares, I guess I just declared, and the board will return to public session. We will, uh, if we vote in favor of the contract, we will return to public session to report that. Um, also, need to go into executive session under general law thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, town administrator. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, as the chair so declares, and we will not return to public session, I have to read it just like this, this word doesn't make any sense at all, this is...
By the state.
The state says I have to read it just like this, because this doesn't make any sense at all.
Actually, no, technically.
I'm gonna read these words?
No, I would say the person making the motion has to read those words, not the chairman, but it doesn't really matter.
Alright, so I'm, I guess I'm making that motion, um, uh, roll call vote. Mr. Deroch?
Aye.
Mr. Gaspar?
Aye.
Mr. Cabral's an aye, we are in executive session, and we may reconvene into public session. Um, I think we have to come into public session anyway, even if there's nothing to report, and we'll say there's nothing to report. Okay. Twenty nineteen, Acushnet Board of Selectmen returning from executive session. Reviewed two proposed contracts with our firefighters and our police department, um, and I'd first like to ask for a motion for an agreement in principle pending a memorandum of agreement